So we have, what do we have? 602?
Mm-hmm.
On November 16th, 2015. So we will call the school committee meeting to order. Tonight, we're going to start with our minutes from November 2nd, 2015. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of November 2nd, 2015.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any comments or edits to the minutes? Okay, so all who are in favor to approve the minutes, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. Next section, as always, is visitors' comments. We have no visitors. So we will skip that section. Next, we have our reports and recommendations from our superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on my report is regarding donations of more technology equipment. David is the technology procureur extraordinaire. He went down to Warwick, Rhode Island, to the office of the USDA down there, and got 18 laptops, 16 monitors, four desktops, and a few keyboards and some mice. So again, I would just recommend that the school committee accept that donation.
You know, each time we talk about it, I just have this vision of a van pulling next to a door, and their laptops and everything goes in.
It's pretty much how it works!
And David brings them back to him.
Yes, he does.
That's cool. That's cool. Please, thank him for that again. So is there a motion to approve the computer donations?
I'll make a motion to approve the listed donated computer equipment.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any comments, questions? No? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue, you're up.
Well, thank you. I do have a budget report for this fiscal year, which basically represents four months, one third of the fiscal year. As you can see, we encumbered, in most line items, we've encumbered and/or forecasted where we're going with, where we think we're going, the projections for those lines. And as you can see, it's a pretty tight budget. As of right now, we have about $1,100. We view a surplus at this point. But it'll probably change as we move forward.
You mean that surplus is going to get larger, right?
No. We can always hope. The one thing I noted is, and I think I talked about it the last meeting, is the maintenance cost. You know, we're four months into the year, and there's presently a $90, $600 deficit in the maintenance. So that's something that we're certainly concerned about and watching, and I think we'll be talking to the town about that in the near future.
So what is, what was that mainly due to? To what?
It's just, it's all a lot of equipment, maintenance of equipment, maintenance of building.
Yep. Yep, we have, you know, door locks at East Metal School that have needed to be replaced. We have some plumbing issues at East Metal School. We've had some plumbing issues here. You know, we've got issues going on at West Street School in terms of things that are going on in all of those buildings. And we are looking at a deadline of Friday to get a five-year capital plan into the capital planning committee. So our building consultant is working with John Sullivan very hard. And Thursday, we're going to sit down with the principals. Archie's going to be there as well, and get the final thing ready to go, so that it's in the capital planning committee's hands for the Friday deadline. And then obviously, we will share that with you at your December 7th meeting. But they gave us about a three-week window to get it done. So we're working fast and furious. And I think part of it, part of the problem, is that you've had a long history of backing into a number. And when you're trying to figure out how many kids in a classroom versus maybe we stave off some maintenance, those are tough choices that have to be made. And I think that now's the time to begin to have some conversation with the town about the fact that buildings have been let go, preventative maintenance has not been done, things are in disrepair, and they have to be addressed, and resources have to be put in that direction.
So the capital plan that will be submitted to the committee?
Mm-hmm.
Is that a draft plan, or is that going to be considered a final plan by the committee? That's the committee, the capital plan?
It will be what we submit to them. I assume they will ask us to come before them at a meeting, at a future date, to discuss what's on the plan.
Because we didn't get a chance to look at that.
Yeah, I know. It's, I was notified three weeks ago that this had to be done by Friday. So we are scrambling as fast as we can possibly.
Was that from the capital planning committee?
Yes.
Do you remember who was the committee?
I don't. The memorandum came from the town administrator and stated that Friday was the deadline. So we're working fast and furious to get it done. We did get the roof report back on this building. We're looking at $600-plus thousand. Our building consultant went up on the roof with our director of public facilities. Two out of 22 vent fans now work up there. That's it. So there's some big-ticket items that need to be addressed.
Right. So I guess...
Yeah, we're putting Band-Aids on open source, is what we're doing right now. And that's why you're seeing every year money being over expended, because we need to have a good, solid capital improvement plan, and then from that should flow a good, solid preventative maintenance plan.
So may I offer this? I don't know whether it's going to happen or not. But we were only given three weeks to prepare a capital plan. Obviously, you could not have completed that plan for our previous meeting. And you're working on that one to submit it this Friday. So if you can just impress upon folks on the capital planning committee that we would like to have some conversation around those items, which may or may not change, because we still have to look and prioritize, especially if they have objections to some of those items, which, you know, they may have questions and all that. So that's why I'm asking whether or not that's going to be considered final. You know, it's not something that we really were able to, I trust that you guys did all the due diligence and you're looking at it. But it would be great if we could...
Absolutely.
...look at it before it is considered final on this side.
And I don't believe it will be. I think this is just get it in, and then there will be some conversation about that. So in my mind, it's a draft plan. It's based on the best information that we're going to be able to gather in the short amount of time we've had to gather it. And then with all the members that need to be at the table on Thursday of saying, so what are the priorities, and how do we slice this out over five or six years? I think the capital plan, actually, the form I got from the town is actually a six-year window, so.
Okay. Is everyone under the same three-week notice?
I assume so.
Every other town department?
I assume so. But again, I think, you know, where other people are in terms of doing this kind of long-range forecasting on the town side with facilities, they may have been in a better place than we are, or police and fire may have plans that are in place that they're just kind of rolling over or through. We did not have something that we could really sink our teeth into, so.
Okay. Right. Oh, okay.
So we're chugging along as fast as we can go.
Yeah. No, I mean, since you mentioned it that way, that's a very good point, that if the other departments can build on what plans they already had in place, it's obviously an advantage. So I'm wondering whether you had the opportunity to build on what we had in previous years as capital plan, or that basically is no longer valid, and we have to start from scratch, which is a bigger challenge.
What I had was some plans that the principals had been asked to submit, and then somehow got turned into a district plan. They had no dollars attached to them, and they had no real sense of being like over any more than two to three years. And really, with capital plans, it should be a rolling five-year plan, and every year you should be revisiting it, taking off what's been done, putting on to the back end things that you think five years from now need to be addressed.
Is this something that is requested yearly?
Yes.
How do we miss this?
No, we actually had a conversation around this. My recollection is similar, that we had a three-year window on that one. And potentially, some of the items were moved to future years because of all the conversations around the school, the roof, this and that. So we moved some of the items forward, not to go to the town with a total of huge dollar sums. So there were a lot of different factors that impacted that. But you're right, a five-year plan is probably what...
That should be looked at on an annual basis and redone.
Yes.
So, you know, as we're looking at the needs that have come up, you know, of which there are several, you know, things that the building inspector has noticed when she came through the buildings before we opened, that we need to have addressed. You know, just things that are, the roof on this building is 25 years old. It's at the end of its useful life. You know, the curbs around the vent fans, in order to be at code right now, should be eight inches, they're not all eight inches up there. So we're going to do a roof project, we should probably do ventilation at the same time. So we're looking at a sizable amount of money to do that. Some of these things, depending on the urgency, et cetera, may be eligible for MSBA reimbursement, and those are some of the things that we'll have to look at. Obviously, within the space of three weeks, we have not had time to do engineering studies of things, so these are our best estimates of what the costs are. You know, in some cases, that may be something that's on the first year of the capital plan is some engineering costs, just to have people go up and give us harder numbers that we could then massage in future years. But to get that as a capital item in year one is, you know, estimating about $30,000 of some engineering costs that would need to be done with regard to replacing the boilers in this building. You know, we're looking at, obviously, boilers that would be way more efficient than the boilers that are here, so there could be, obviously, some savings in heating costs. You know, looking at lighting programs for this building, you know, getting LEDs in. There are incentive and grant programs that can help with that, so that you don't have to put out a whole lot of upfront money. And then what you do is you continue to budget for utilities at the rate you were budgeting at, and you use that money to pay off the lighting program. But again, in the end, once it's paid off in two to four years, then you're reaping the benefit of energy efficiency. So those are all things that we're looking at right now.
So you're putting a lot in that list, I hope, right?
Yes, sir.
Are you also looking at the athletic fields outside?
We haven't done a whole lot of looking at that, to be honest.
With the gym floor?
The gym floor here, yeah, because it's probably going to be, it's not something that could be sanded and refinished. We're probably at the limit of what could be done there. So some of those kinds of things. But I mean, certainly, the roof here, the ventilation system here, you know, the heating here, those are huge, big-ticket items, and they are priority items.
If it's a five-year plan, why wouldn't the fields be a part of that? Especially considering the fields committee has been here a few times. We have kind of intimated that we were looking long-term.
Mm-hmm. Part of the issue, too, with the fields is the potential of construction, and what's going to happen site-work-wise, and all of that business, and whether that would impact anything in the fields. You know, our hope is to stay away from the fields, but we've got to put a fire suppression pump out in the back of East Metal, so that we now have a fire suppression system within the building. The well has to be moved. Obviously, there's going to be site excavation work that's done in tandem with the building project. So I think it's, you know, how much site activity do you have? The fields committee did have some things on a capital plan that were given to me. I'll touch base with them and just see where that stands, if there's any tweaks that should be made to that, and, you know, think about things that need to be added to it as well. But again, I didn't have records on those until a couple of months ago. So again, I'm trying to get myself up to speed as fast as I can.
I would just put as much as you can, because feedback I received in the past is that people would say, "Well, we didn't know anything about that. You know, we didn't know anything about that." So the more you put out there, the more you can say, "I didn't know that," even though it's down the road.
Agreed.
The needs are great, just they have to be put out there.
Yep.
They have to be put out there.
I mean, the boilers in this building are behemoths. They are not anywhere close to being efficient. I imagine that when they take them out, they will probably have to come in with oxy-acetylene torches and pull them apart.
Yeah.
So, which is an interesting process. I have watched that happen.
And to your point, Dan, the reason why we don't remember these details, because we do not have these details to be able to say, "Okay, these are some of the line items, and can we just play around, and can we prioritize some of these items?" And then we had pretty much high-level line items by school, and that's what I recall, and I only recall that, nothing more than that.
Yeah.
But as far as the fields, I agree that probably we should have it in there, because that's going to be needed. I'm assuming you're going to say that you're already working on it anyway, right? Just, I know you want to add something. On two grounds. One is, I hope that the construction that will hopefully happen, if it does, will not really do any damage to anything that is in place.
Right.
That's one thing.
Right.
But number two, if there is any reason for us to believe that whatever is in place cannot be sustained, maintained, or maybe touched by any one of those things, we should let the committee know sooner than later, so that they don't really continue to invest money, because they are going out there, and they volunteer their time, and they fundraise. So at least we can tell them, "Hey, you know, let's just slow it down a bit, or stop for a few months," whatever it is, until we know exactly what's going to happen. That would be...
Yeah. My main concern would be the pump for the fire suppression system, and whether or not they're going to go back to get a water source out back there. That's, and I don't think they were fully clear on the plans. The building committee meets again tomorrow night, so hopefully we can get some more clarity on that. Then that will help that whole thing, but...
And to Jim's point, I think we should just have everything on there, because we need to start communicating this information anyway, to the town.
Right.
They need to understand the depth of the school needs, because like you said, we have been not, we have not been doing preventative maintenance for years.
Right. Everything's reactionary.
So we're not at preventative.
Right. If something breaks, if something breaks, we fix it.
Yeah.
For example, when the windows in central office broke because of the snow load on the air conditioners, you know, we brought somebody in to take a look at what it would take to fix them. Lo and behold, it was asbestos and caulking. We had to have it abated.
Yeah.
You know? So I mean, you can say, "We're going to replace the windows in this building," but just be aware that all the caulking is asbestos. So that adds a cost to things.
And the other side of that is, as you know, because we've been having these conversations for a long time now, around the new building project, as Jim said, when those numbers aren't out there to show the magnitude of maintenance that needs to be done to existing structures, when we start talking about new structures, folks say, "Hey, you know, what's wrong with the existing ones? You know, you can patch it here and patch it there, it will just last for a while." If we can put those numbers out there, at least it just shows the urgency, and that, you know, we're not just working on a new building project, just to work on a new building project, because we're trying to really save money by not spending our dollars on some maintenance plan, that's not going to last too long.
Right.
So for us to be able to do that analysis, it would be great to put the numbers out there.
And again, there are things where, you know, for example, if somebody went up and, say, did repair an event system, okay, would it be cheaper? Sure. Would you be going back out and looking at it again in three to five years? Absolutely, because you're talking about motors and belts and bearings that are original to the building. So I'm of the school, do it once, do it right, and be done with it. Replace them. It may cost you more out of the gate, but replace them, and then you'll have another 20 years on them.
Yeah.
You know, that makes sense versus spending short money to repair them, and then three to five years from now, you're looking at repairing them again. That's, to me, is not a wise investment of the town's money.
That's a whole mentality shift, though, what you're talking about, because that's the way the town has been viewing it, is we don't have the funds for that, so we are going to have to, you know, Band-Aid it.
Yep.
But when you're continually Band-Aiding, you're just spending thousands more anyway in the end.
You're spending more money in the end. Yeah. In the end, you're spending more money, and I think that's the thing that people have to understand, is that you spend more money by Band-Aiding instead of doing it once and doing it right.
The other thing I was going to say is, even Judy, Adrienne, and I had some initial discussions around the five-year capital plan. You know, we were sort of focusing needs in the classroom. You know, we want to look at our science classrooms, our special education classrooms, and, you know, exactly see if we can get the most bang for our buck. And I know that, you know, the athletic fields have come up, and we've invested some money and time and so forth. But, you know, having set front of the finance committee last year, you know, sometimes how difficult it is to get money out of the finance committee, you know, even with the rug ideas, you know, very nominal costs that, you know, was not voted on. So, you know, in terms of prioritizing, like Judy said, between the roof, heating, ventilation, you know, the lists can get pretty hefty in terms of what the needs are in this building.
But those three things...
The locker rooms, you know, and it goes on and on and on.
Yeah. But those three things, heating, ventilation, and the roof, are health and safety issues.
Yeah.
I mean, they need to be at the forefront.
But again, it is a good idea. I think we'll agree to list everything.
Absolutely.
And we say, "Hey, you know, if we can only spend this much, this is how we're going to prioritize." But that would allow us not to overlook the fact that there is a longer list that needs our attention.
Or can you phase some things in? For example, if you were to do the roof and redo the ventilation system over the gymnasium or the cafeteria, say, for example, you might say, "That's year one. Year two, you're going to replace the vents, you know, on this part of the building," or something like that. So there's ways of looking at, "How couldn't we take some of these bigger-ticket items and maybe spread them out over the life of, or part of the life of the plan, and do it in a way that you phase it all in?"
That's how a capital plan works.
Yes.
I mean, I'm not a finance person, but that's my understanding of capital plans anyway.
Right.
And also bathrooms, we talked about.
Yep. Yeah. I mean, the rest of the bathrooms need to be done. $40,000 didn't even get us the two downstairs ones.
Is that done, right there?
Done.
Done? Okay, I haven't been done.
When I say done, I say about 90% completion.
Yeah. Yeah, I think there's a couple of other things. I think there's some things with partitions and stuff, that I think they're waiting for the partitions to come in, so.
So it's painted and...
It's not painted, because we're obviously going to wait for the construction to be done.
Oh.
The lighting, the plumbing.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
You know, we watch all these shows on HGTV and stuff, folks come in, and then, you know, they walk out spending $100, and it looks...
Takes them a while.
Yeah, we have before and after pictures, I hope.
Well, actually, it's funny you say that, because you're right. You know, the initial costs, you know, we thought that we could do all of them for this month, and then we come to find out, we didn't get two done.
Yeah.
Because, you know, the play this weekend, when we came in, you know, I went to check the boys' bathroom, and I thought maybe that was to come, that was still going to happen.
Yeah.
But I guess, I can tell that the fixtures are new and all that, that's, you know...
Yep. And the vanity was ripped out of the girls' room, and wall-mounted sinks are there.
Yeah, I didn't make sure on that side, so I didn't...
You know, and the fixtures have been replaced. But I mean, that took a Saturday, because they could not fully shut off the valves to the bathrooms. So I came in, they shut the water off to the building, and, you know, had a fun Saturday.
The girls' side, I think, is a little bit better, because the boys' side, they have the concrete, you know, stalls. I guess I was putting them in about 20 years ago, because students were, we were told students were basically destroying the partitions. So they put concrete ones in. And, you know, it was very expensive to get rid of the concrete to go back to the partitions, but...
Right. But they're going to put new doors, yeah. And because those have to be custom-done, that'll take a little extra time to get them done, so.
Okay. Thank you, John. Thank you. So going back to the financial report, a couple of questions, Archie.
Mm-hmm.
I see again that our school committee line is spent, in fact, overspent.
Yep.
What is it spent for? Is it all the superintendent search and everything that's coming out of it?
That's a part of it, yes.
But we, I thought we had started, or we were, we knew that we were going to search for a new superintendent beforehand, and we had some folks visit us...
Yeah, but because the work did not start until this fiscal year, it's pretty much all, because you had thought you were going to start last summer, or before the fiscal year rolled over. But because the services didn't start until this fiscal year, it's out of this fiscal year. So you had talked about, you had talked about spreading it out over two years, but because the work didn't begin until after July 1st, so that's why the money's been set aside in full.
I remember that.
Yeah. Of course, you know, last year, because we moved these monies around, last year, there was no surplus on this line item that said, "Hey, you know, you didn't start the search this year, and therefore, we have this leftover money." You know, not having seen that, then this requires some narrative around it. I do understand, and I do agree, but, so we don't have all those narratives around how the money's moving, where is potential surplus or not. This, you know, again, made me think that, you know, we spent the money somewhere, and I started coming up with some possibilities of why we might have already overspent our line item.
Well, and I, go ahead, Don.
I can certainly go check exactly what that figure represents, and report back to you.
Okay. The other thing that I, probably it's an accounting thing, but the one around tuition to non-public schools.
Yeah.
We have 0% expended.
Correct. I think what's happening is that they're charging tuition to mass public schools at this point. And that's something I was just telling you. Judy, before we came in here, that we're meeting in two weeks with the special ed directors, we're going to sit down, and we're going to go through everything with regards to tuition, and then make sure that everything gets charged to the right place.
Okay. Okay. So it's encumbered for the most part, but not expended?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay.
Not expended, yeah.
All right. Anything else, Archie?
No, that's all I have for now.
Any questions? Any other questions for Archie? Okay. Well, thank you.
This is the second reading on Section A of the policy manual. So at this point, this can be voted on tonight?
So this is our second reading, right? And if there is any edit correction, we'd like to have those. Otherwise, we're going to be voting tonight to approve.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay. To the extent that you're able to go through the long section, are there any edits, comments, suggested changes? So this application is what people have to fill out to get a poster even put up in the building? Is that...
That's not the section we're looking at right now. We're looking at the full A section, Jim?
Full A section?
Yep.
Am I on the wrong one? All right.
If you're looking in the Google Drive, it's in the Policy Committee Subcommittee folder.
Let me go back, I'm sorry. That's fine. If you go back to the folder, is it Policy Subcommittee?
Policy, too. Those two.
Nope. There shouldn't be another one. If you go up, is there another? There is. It's in the same place, no? Yeah, here, this... Yeah, here, this, uh, this is, basically, what it is, if you go to the full drive, there is the Policy Subcommittee.
I'll find it.
Okay.
I looked at it before, so.
All right.
That's mine. Forget my question.
Do you want us to proceed with the vote?
Yeah, proceed, yeah.
Okay. So, all in favor to approve, uh, A section of Grand B policy, School Committee policies, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, um, I, uh, held off on the coffee and conversation, uh, sessions with the superintendent, 'cause we got into a little bit of a pickle, we're trying to get things scheduled. Um, so I'm looking to do that probably after Thanksgiving, I'm thinking probably the first full week in December. Um, I'm having some oral surgery on the Monday after Thanksgiving, so probably won't be that week, 'cause I'll have chipmunk cheeks, but, yeah, the uppers, so.
Could be coffee and no conversation.
We have to have Jim come and do the, do the thing, 'cause it was supposed to be about the school building project, so, um, you know, so hopefully I'll, I've just gotta work with, uh, Jen Champagne on trying to get some space scheduled and, you know.
You're doing that over the holiday weekend, what'd you say?
No, no, after Thanksgiving. Probably like the first week in December, after the wisdom teeth come out.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you.
And then, uh, the next item is, um, the results of the Professional Development Day, and in your packet, I, uh, shared with you some evaluations that were done by, uh, the folks who had, who were the recipients of Professional Development, and just, uh, not an action item to say, but just, uh, for your information. Um, I think the Curriculum Day went pretty well. Um, people looked tired at the end of the day, it was a lot of information to absorb, but, uh, they, uh, they were troopers and, uh, they did a great job, we got a lot done, uh, that day, so.
Good work.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
About these? Um, so were these anonymous
Yes.
surveys that people did?
Mm-hmm.
Because I noticed that it seemed overall that people were just pleased with how things went.
Mm-hmm.
There were a couple outliers.
Mm-hmm. That happens no matter what you give.
And I knew that, I mean, I didn't think anything negative about it, other than, huh, I wonder if there would be a way to, or is there a way that, you know, you say, okay, well, what, what made it not so productive?
Mm-hmm.
You know, is there something we can do to?
Yeah.
'Cause you, you know, you see there, with those outliers, you're not feeling as
And one of the pieces of feedback, well, and one of the pieces of feedback I took, or one of the pieces I took from this was that, uh, the people who were working on trying to prioritize standards in ELA and math, there were sixteen people who thought the afternoon was a different session than it was, so, which means somewhere along the line, I wasn't clear enough with people. So, I think where people said that they felt like they were struggling with it, they were part of those, um, people who had indicated a different session, I swapped it out, because I knew we'd have a problem on the other end with the data if I didn't swap them out, but it was supposed to be the same session both morning and afternoon. So I think there was a little confusion, I think it was 'cause they came to see me, they thought they were doing something else, and that may have been why there was a little bit of a disconnect there, so, um, so that just gives me some feedback about, uh, being clear.
Yeah, the feedback overall was, I mean, it seemed like people were really
Yeah.
happy about it, and that they got a lot out of it.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for doing that.
I know, that's, uh,
Lot of work.
Yeah, my goodness. Well, you don't sleep anyways, so.
No, it's overrated.
Anything else on that?
No.
Okay, thank you. So, for, under new business, we have nothing, but I will add one quick note on that one. Um, 'cause, you know, it happened yesterday, so we didn't get a chance to acknowledge it. Our girls did it again.
Mm-hmm.
They won, uh, Western Mass, uh, Division Three.
Yeah.
Girls', uh, soccer championship, so congratulations to all of them. Awesome, this is actually becoming a powerhouse now, uh, uh, everybody, uh, knows Grand B girls' soccer, I know they know many other names, many other teams, but, you know, this is what? Second time in three years that they won it?
Second time in three years?
Two years ago they won it.
Yeah, so you're right, second time in three years, so.
Awesome.
When's the next game?
The next game is Wednesday evening, five o'clock at Nishoba.
Two days from now?
Yes. In where?
Nishoba, Regio.
Up in Bolton, yes.
In Bolton.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's see, the teams have identical records.
Yes.
Yes.
Nineteen oh and two.
Yes.
So if there are students that wanna go to that game, I mean, are, is there a bus that's being provided?
It's being donated by First Student.
Oh, nice, wow.
John, John asked First Student today if, uh, he could get a fan bus, and they are donating the bus and the driver.
Wow, that's awesome.
That's awesome.
That's great.
So he's leaving here Wednesday at two o'clock.
Wow.
Yeah. Well, thank you for doing that, it'll be there plenty of time.
Well, we figure an hour and a half to get there, and then, you know, you never know with, in terms of making sure that you have traffic or whatever to get there earlier.
Yeah. There is construction on four ninety-five if they go up Route Two, right, right by that entrance, and then four ninety-five, depends on the day.
Mm-hmm.
It can be fine or it cannot be.
Which way you suggest some people to go? Do you have directions, is it?
We'll have to get them out, uh, tomorrow, so I'll have to find, you know, get the directions.
Probably the best way, if I were to do it from here, would be to go up two oh two, to Route Two, to four ninety-five, to exit thirty... It's either thirty-two, I should know that.
So it'll be four ninety-five south once you get
Nope, four ninety-five north, like you head into Maine.
North, you head up Route Two?
Yep, it's, uh, it's the Westford exit, and then you can get to Nishoba Valley from there.
Yeah.
I wouldn't do the Pike, I, I literally would do two oh two to Route Two.
If you provide more details, we're gonna have to call you Siri.
It's the halfway point between here and, um, the whole family in Maine, that's how we know, that's the pit stop exit, so. That's the Starbucks coffee exit, let's put it that way.
Good.
So, um, that's how I know that.
Well, congratulations, and, um, uh, good luck on Wednesday, and thank you for ranging the bus for us.
John, John did that.
John, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Great. So, old business, uh, we're gonna revisit the, uh, policy on advertising in the schools. Uh, last, last time, we had a few visitors who came here to express their, um, views and suggestions on the policy, which we, uh, modified, uh, somewhat, uh, about a month ago, two months ago?
Month ago.
Month ago. Um, so we wanted to bring it back to this meeting, uh, to make sure that whatever comments we are hearing are heard, uh, considered, and see whether there is anything else, uh, we should be doing. Do we have any additional data that we can share at this point, related to this particular policy?
Um, not at this particular time, because, for example, the drama production that just passed was actually a fundraising activity for the Drama Club, so it went out in paper as well as electronically, per, per the policy, and it was a pretty good attendance. I was here Saturday afternoon and went, and, um, you know, it was, it wasn't a full, full house, but it was a pretty full house. And then Sunday, I stopped here just quick to do one last thing, um, to get ready for tonight, and, um, there seemed to be a pretty good crowd of cars here Sunday afternoon as well, um, so I think that certainly was a helpful thing. Um, I have been trying to, in my, uh, email blasts through Connected, also add these things as attachments. So if they are school connected activities, not the community ones, but the school connected activities, I remind people about the digital backpack, and then I say, attached, for your convenience. The Booster Club, um, I got a thing kind of late in the going from them with regard to their athletic apparel, which has, again, a short deadline to it, so today, I uploaded it, um, and sent it out, again, via Connected, with the form attached, just to make it easier for people to find. Um, I also approved the posters to be put up and, uh, you know, sent them off to the, um, they wanted them here at the high school in, at East Meadow, so they each got copies today, um, and put it up in the digital backpack. So we're trying to do as much of that as possible. I, um, was talking with, uh, Tricia Woods from G-CAM, we were trying to find some sort of screencasting software that would also allow a little video piece to be done, um, she was struggling with that, so I did some research over the weekend. I think I had found a piece of screencasting software that will give the output that she needs. So I just need to download it and do a screencast of, hi, this is how you get to the digital backpack, and, uh, get that uploaded, so that, uh, you know, get that off to her, so she can get it onto G-CAM, so it'd be another mode of communication about how all this happens.
What are some of the examples of, uh, you know, the concerns, uh, that, the things that aren't going currently?
Um, I think it was some concerns, for example, the ice cream social at West Street School was not as well-attended. Um, that went out in the digital backpack, um, it was also a lovely Friday evening in the middle of the Big E. So whether or not that had any impact, it was a warm Friday evening at the height of the Big E. So whether families chose to go there versus coming and having ice cream at West Street School, I don't know, um.
Do you know if there was any other advertising that supplemented, you know?
Their email, their email list.
Okay, so they send out an email.
They have a Facebook page, and I guess their attendance was down by almost fifty percent.
I find it hard to believe that it's because of the flyer, that it's down by fifty percent. I could see down somewhat, but fifty percent, it seems like there must be other factors going on.
Well, like I say, that was in the middle of the Big E, and it was a warm, beautiful Friday evening, so whether or not families chose to go there, I don't know. Um, I know that they, they did a fundraising letter, which I did let go out in hard copy, um, to try and just get people to write a donation check. And, um, you know, even without the policy, I said, okay, let's work together, you know, let's have that go out in hard copy. They did not receive the amount of donations, even with the hard copy. Um, it's a new way of fundraising for them, uh, and some of the buzz I've heard on the street is that people were not particularly pleased with that modality of fundraising, um, so, you know, whether or not it's, you know, you really need to sell the cookie dough and all that stuff.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and I understand, 'cause fundraisers are a ton of work, um, you know, so trying to do something that's more of a direct, um, solicit. But again, that's a change in how fundraising has been done over the years for the PTO, so getting people used to that change, you know. Um, the other thing was the grab-and-go dinners, and when I talked with, um, Sharon Bale about that, kid, band kids had actually been taking the papers home with them. So when I told them, you know, that you had made this change to the policy, um, 'cause she had come and met with me about this, and I said, well, you know, this is the change that's been made, and so, at the discretion of the superintendent, and I said, absolutely, something like that, we would let go home. She was very satisfied with that response, um, and said, yeah, she was okay with that, so.
So I guess I'm trying to understand, I'm trying to understand the concerns, because, you know, you had a few people that showed up last meeting, so clearly there's, you know, and wrote a letter, so there's concern, I'm trying to understand more of the details of the concern.
I think it's just a shift in how things are done, and, um, without trying to sound like I'm tooting my own horn here, but people have said to me that people are just not used to a high level of communication from the district out to the community.
Agreed.
So I think people are not used to coming to our website. Our website is still a little bit messy, 'cause I haven't finished that project yet, but, I mean, it looked like somebody's file cabinet draw instead of some, a website you would navigate to, and do some of the traditional things that you would do navigating any website, so I've tried to change some of that. Some of the feedback I got early on from people was that they don't bother going to the website, because there was too much visual clutter. I've tried to clean that up as best as I can, I'm trying to make things current, I'm trying to swap out that slideshow, swap out pictures. Um, I got some from East Meadow School, Liam Royce Sapolsky, you know, he's trying to feed me stuff, so I can swap pictures out periodically. Um, you know, I'm trying to take my own photos of things, so, uh, you know, like soccer games, or, you know, whatever, I put those in, things in my blog, and then some people swap those things out in that slideshow, so that there's more currency, there's more of a reason to go there. Um, you know, the feedback I've gotten about the blog posts weekly has been positive from people, they feel like they know more about what's going on in the district, they feel like they're being communicated with on a more regular basis. So I think it's that shift in, yeah, I should be looking at this, at the district's website, 'cause there is new information up. I think that's a, just a, a shift of practice that people are not yet used to.
Do we have a counter at our website?
We don't, I looked in, I looked at, um, how we might be able to do that, and there is a way to do Google Analytics on the site, so David and I just need to work on putting that in there, so we would know how many hits we're getting.
Would you mind if I have a copy of that letter? That was presented at the last meeting?
No, I don't have.
She just read, uh, from her notes, she didn't give an official letter.
Girl scout letter, and then, um...
Yeah, yeah. And the, and the girl scout letter, with all due respect to the girl scouts, you know, as you know, we, we have that regulation from the state that says we can't compel kids to take things home, so I tried to, they had met with me before they came to meet with you. And I explained that, that, to them, you know, that, and they said, well, it's an old memo, you know, why are we just finding out about this now? And I said, well, I'll tell you how I found out about it, well, somebody asked in another district, from the other angle, why am I getting notices from the X-Y-Z organization? I don't want them. So, that's when I, you know, asked legal counsel in the district I was in at the time, how do we deal with this? Because somebody is saying they don't want this stuff to go home, and that's how I became aware of the letter, and when I explained that to the, to the parents who came and met with me, and there was sort of an aha moment, oh, we didn't think about the fact that there may be some people who don't want these things coming home. So you've got both sides of that coin to deal with in all of this mix, is that there are things that are school-affiliated that absolutely you can compel to go home, but things, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, you know, yoga classes from whatever, or, you know, other community organizations, we can't compel, teacher cannot stuff those in every backpack. You can put them out and say, here they are for the taking, but you can't compel kids to take those things home. Um, so, uh, you know, I think, um, you know, we also heard from a paraprofessional who says it's a lot of work to stuff folders when you get a blast of paper, and that sometimes the flyers outnumber the schoolwork, which, you know, what's the message we're sending as well? And, so it's, it's hard to find a good balance around all of this stuff, I mean, you know, every single week, you see the emails I send out, you know, I'm reminding people, go to the digital backpack, but in the meantime, here's an attachment for your convenience, so I'm trying to help make that transition over, but I think it's just getting people used to, um, you know, thinking about a digital world, I think you got younger, you know, uh, families who will be more digitally inclined, I mean, um, you know, whether or not, I know teachers at the high school, you know, have web portals through Edline, so that parents can go there to look at assignments, or to see how their kids are doing, or things like that. Um, we've had some discussion at senior leadership team about rolling out the parent portal at, at East Meadow and starting to work our way, um, down, so that, you know, again, parents can get used to that system at, at East Meadow, and that that's more regular engagement with families, 'cause you can get more information out and have more back and forth, uh, in a more timely manner, so. Um, it's just getting people used to looking at things differently.
Yeah, it is, it is a shift. If I, if I may take a couple of steps back, um, I, I'm actually very happy that the conversation is happening this way. You know, we had visitors who had some concerns, they shared their concerns, there is no guarantee that we're gonna be able to do this for every concerned race, but there was an opportunity to revisit a policy change that we made recently, uh, based on the, uh, feedback that we got. So, th- this is the kind of conversation we're hoping to have, right? Uh, so I'm very happy that it happened that way, and we got that direct feedback. Um, but also, there is the fact that we did consider, uh, different factors when we were coming up with this new policy. And, uh, part of it is, uh, partly the, the extra work- And part of it is, partly the extra work that the teachers have to do, no matter trivial it may sound, just adding one more paper. And the other concern that was raised that evening, I agree with that because I remember it from my own kids' folders, binders, that, you know, sometimes you have so many things that you miss an important message and it may be really critical and urgent and related to their coursework. So at least we're trying to strike a balance. But aside from that, you know, we have visitors here who were talking about recycling programs and all that. We're also trying to be conscious on that front too, to minimize, reduce and minimize the amount of paper that we are using for this type of communication. That said, even before these conversations happened, I'm glad that, you know, there was a proactive change to the policy to say, for fundraisers, we understand that it may take a little while for folks to look at the website, so we're not gonna take any risk and for fundraisers, if requested and approved by the superintendent, we're gonna have fundraiser flyers go home for our internal organizations, right? So the reason why I wanted to bring it back tonight is to make sure that in light of the conversation that we had or in light of things that we heard at our last meeting, we are continuing to be comfortable with the current policy, advertising in schools policy, the way it is. And we always keep the door open for future updates, future changes, based on the feedback that they receive or based on the changes that happen to technology and to the community, to expectations, what have you. Is that a fair...
Yeah, and I think too, the other thing is that the principals have been pretty proactive about trying to get parents to give email addresses. They are doing a lot of communication only because I see the results of that, you know. All of the principals are doing a lot of communication with parents via email or using the Connected Ed email function. Jen Champagne attaches her newsletter and off it goes. John does a lot of communication with parents via email. We're trying to not use the phone as much, well, because I get all those calls too and sometimes they're not aware that each other is making phone calls and I can have, you know, three or four phone messages in a single night about something, you know, but we also don't want to desensitize people to that phone call when we have a true emergency and they need to pick up the phone. So, you know, the principals have been really trying to get parents more comfortable with online. I watched in Blackboard, when I send stuff out, the number of email addresses is rising on a weekly basis. We were under 900, where I think the one I did today, there were 960 different emails. So people are starting to share their emails so that they can get that communication from us. So I'm seeing an uptick in that realm as well. So I think people are starting to understand that there's gonna be more electronic communication from the district out to them and so...
And that was my, that was kind of the point that I was leading to before with how is, you know, is it being communicated within each school, whether it's the ice cream social or, you know, go to the digital backpack, that's where all the information, because that's where...
Yeah, every week when I say, hi, the update blog is out, here's the web URL, don't forget the digital backpack, here's all the stuff, and in the meantime, here are the copies of the things so you can find them easily in hopes that eventually we can get people without the attachments just to go look.
Yeah. And that's a good point. You know, this year I don't think I've seen a single flyer, whether it came to my house or not, I don't even know, I haven't seen a single one, but I don't think I missed any message that John sent. It's a personal preference because I, you know, I check my email often enough, but, you know, when I see Granby Schools, I just, I look for what it is. And this is, you know, among all the other emails that we receive, whether it's related to the school committee meetings, this and that, there is a different, slightly different format to it, so it catches the eye and then you click and you read it. Doesn't mean it has to apply to everyone, but it's a shift, it's an expectation. Now I know that when I see that, I can click and immediately read what's being communicated. Let's see how it goes, let's see what we get. And also just to make sure if anyone's watching, that we reiterate the fact that if there are folks who do not have access to the internet and therefore cannot get to the website, they can let us know and we will always send a flyer to their home.
Right, there's limited numbers of paper copies available. I know that all the principals are aware of families that don't, so they make sure that there are copies available so that that information will get out, so. And people who put in an application for something, they can get that number. I think there's like 12 families at East Meadow, I think there's 12 or 15 at West Street and I think a similar number here at the high school, you know, of people who don't have access. So again, we make those things available to them.
Cool. Well, thank you. Anything else that anyone wanted to add? Okay, well, thank you both for your help with this policy. And our last item in this section is the response to association request regarding collective bargaining.
Yes, the association responded to the school committee with regard to collective bargaining with all of the units. And per discussion we had earlier about those, that request, I just sort of drafted a letter that would be an official response to them. I have had conversation with them about negotiating each group separately and who among you would be serving on those and a potential first date. I've also checked with our legal counsel and those two dates are available to them. These will be shorter meetings because it's usually just establishing ground rules and a schedule of meetings and then we go from there.
And I think just to highlight one thing here, that the entire school committee will be involved in these meetings one way or another. Not all of them all at once, but that's a shift from our previous meetings as well, that we really want to be there, we wanna be part of the conversation, so everyone's gonna be in one shape or another at these meetings.
And so what will happen is under the open meeting law, these will all be posted as executive sessions. So whoever the two people are, you would open a meeting, go into, you know, executive session and then the negotiations would happen in executive session.
Until we finalize the negotiations and then...
Right, right, and then the final agreement comes out in public.
Yep. Great, thank you very much for that. I don't see anything under upcoming business?
Uh, no.
Okay. And then we have our correspondence package.
And basically, if you're good with the letter, I'll just have you sign it and...
That's okay.
Am I supposed to sign this?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, you wrote her a nice letter.
You know, my punctuation is impeccable.
Make sure that copies get out. Like I say, I've had some conversations with the association president anyway, so she's aware of where we're at and, you know, legal counsel is all...
Thank you for writing the letter. Is there anything else or are we breaking our own record down here?
Just a question on our new director of facilities, how that is, some update.
He's wide-eyed, but he's cranking right along.
He's always be wide-eyed.
Yep, he's...
But he's still working for it.
Oh, yeah, he's jumped in with both feet and, you know, he's taking it one step at a time.
I've seen him go by in the truck sometimes, I want to wave him down and make sure he looks sane and...
So I'm curious how it's working out, you know, reporting to two different folks so far.
So far, so good.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I think we have to keep talking about that on both sides, this is our first experience shared and I think if we, if it gets ahead of us, that so it doesn't fall upon you, Judy, I know you've done a lot of the work for that and are town administrator, that makes sure that we're aware of issues and stuff that come up, such as like if it starts to snow tomorrow and everything and that kind of stuff.
And being able to split his time, you know, so nobody's really following through the cracks.
It might be...
I have an eight o'clock meeting with him tomorrow and Judy and I met this morning and Judy asked if there was any way I could find an office for him inside the building here.
He's still outside?
He's still outside, but that way, you know, we could maybe have a little more contact and communication with him if he's in the building.
Yeah.
You know, he's able to be seen regularly, so I think that's a step in the right direction. So we're gonna look to see what we can do.
Plus, you shouldn't have to work in a shed.
No, yeah, agreed, especially in the winter.
Yeah.
Yeah, true. So he's fairly new, but he's gonna be part of those conversations with the capital planning folks?
Yes, he's been working with the building consultant, the two of whom were up on this roof together and then came to visit me, to deliver the news the other day. So, yeah, they've been working well together. And then I also made a connection with the buildings and grounds person in Belcher Town who's a very good person and who's willing to, you know, be a support system to John as well, so.
Good. One last thing since we started this conversation and it was part of our previous conversation, the DEP certification that we talked about often, are we getting it through him or...
Eventually, I'm trying to give him a little opportunity to get his sea lakes. He'll have to take some coursework and then sit for an exam and he knows that that needs to be done. And in the meantime, Archie's gotten in touch with the folks who do the work for the town so that they're making sure that we're covered on this side.
That's exactly what I'm trying to get. Good, thank you. Okay, now, any other questions? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Just a second?
One second.
Hold in favor, please say aye.
Aye.